Would you all please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much.
Kathleen.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Wilson.
Davidson.
Here.
Fleming.
Here.
All right, well done. Mayor's Board will be next week. So tonight, first on the agenda is the consent agenda. All matters listed under item one, consent agenda, having been discussed, are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussions of these items. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and it will be considered separately. On the consent, we have finances and miscellaneous, minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer, liquor, wine and cigarettes, reports and bonds. Resolutions, the first resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. The second is a resolution approving final acceptance, final payment and release of retention monies for the 2016 BN sanitary sewer repair project. The third is a resolution approving final acceptance, final payment and release of retention monies for the 2015 sanitary sewer rehab project. The fourth is a resolution, a resolution award contract for facility, planning of the Market Street sub-basin sewer separation project. The fifth is a resolution authorizing agreement with impact seven G for project services associated with the former dresser ran site cleanup project. The sixth is a resolution supporting and approving application to the Wellmark Foundation's Community Kickstarter Grant Program for improvements to D Edwin and Gladys White Park. The seventh is a resolution approving an agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation for maintenance and repair of primary roads and municipalities. The eighth is a resolution amending fees for Dankworth Park Pool. The ninth is a resolution approving the purchase of easements between 163 Crestview, pen number sixteen dash zero nine dash three fifty-eight dash zero zero four, and from an unaddressed lot on South Tenth Street, pen number sixteen dash zero eight dash four fifty-five dash zero two nine, for the construction of storm sewer associated with the 2016 Cascade Watershed Sewer Separation Project Phase Two. The tenth is a resolution extending the maturity date of the city sewer revenue loan and dispersment agreement anticipation project note. And we also have some public hearings set for September nineteenth, two thousand and sixteen. The first is consideration of a sale of property locally known as eleven eighteen Maple Street, Burlington, Iowa with conditions. The second is consideration of sale property locally known as fifteen oh five Etna Street, Burlington, Iowa with conditions. And the third is consideration of an ordinance rezoning the property located on the west side of South Main Street, between Maple Street and Spruce Street, from M one light industrial to C one limited commercial zoning district. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to have any of these items removed from the consent agenda? I see none. Counsel?
Not me.
Your honor, I move to approve all items listed under item one consent agenda.
Second.
Kathleen.
McCamble.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
Well done. Okay, next we have a hearing. This is time set for hearing for consideration of sale of property locally known as one eighteen North Main Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, Des Moines County, with conditions. Mr. Tisland.
This is the sale of the city parking lot at one eighteen North Main Street, located at the southeast corner of Main and Valley Street, for consideration of transfer or purchase of property at one oh one North Main Street, which is currently owned by CMM Company LC. So this is essentially a sale of one lot on South, or Main Street for the purchase of another lot on Main Street. The property at one oh one North Main Street shall be demolished, completely removing the structures and floors from the property prior to, prior to transfer of ownership. The transfer of ownership of the property at one oh one North Main Street shall be completed by September first of twenty seventeen. An escrow on the amount of ten thousand dollars shall be deposited with the city of Burlington. Upon approval of this resolution and prior to transfer of the deed for two one eighteen North Main Street to be held as, I guess, a condition for guarantee of removal of that property. Properties shall be transferred by quitclaim deed. Did talk to the owner of the property and did not anticipate demolishing or moving, removing those structures till later in the winter, so anticipated them having enough time to move out and find another location. So again, the, the properties are very similar in size. One oh one North Main, the property that the city would be acquiring is slightly larger, just by a hundred or so square feet. Their assessed values are essentially the same for land value, and the city would be getting a property adjacent to our existing parking lot that would allow expansion of that parking lot, provide additional spaces that could be used by the police department once they move it into the US Bank property on the north side of Valley Street. And this would allow Frank Millard Company to expand their building that they're planning just south of the lot at one eighteen North Main Street into that lot as well, having the building line up on Valley Street and Main Street, that they do plan to construct this fall or winter as well, so.
Are there any questions from the audience or concerns? I see none. Counsel?
Not me.
Your honor, I move to close the public hearing.
Move to second. Close Kathleen.
McCamble.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
Your honor, I move to approve the sale of property locally known as one eighteen North Main Street, City of Burlington, Des Moines County, Iowa with conditions.
Second.
Move to second. Let's take it to vote.
McCamble.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
Well done. Number two, this is consideration of a, this time set for hearing for consideration of a permanent encroachment agreement with Tracy Thompson for encroachment into city right of way at one twenty-nine Polk Street, Burlington, Iowa. A location has been made. Mr. Tisland.
This is a request by Mr. Thompson at one twenty-nine Polk Street to place a gate across the existing dead end alley there that's located just east of Main Street between Polk and Clay Street. He owns the properties north and south of the alley, and the alley dead ends at his property. He had requested to place a fence there, kind of delineating the property to prevent unwanted access into his property, has had issues in the past there. Upon review by the city, a couple of comments on it. One is that the, the gate should not be locked. It should only be shut or latched so that Public Works needs to access sewer in the area or alliant that they can gain access to the facilities at all time. Any garbage shall be set out so that the sanitation drivers do not have to open the gate to access any garbage that it should be located on the east side of the gate if it's closed or if it's open, just at that location. The applicant shall complete any necessary repairs. If it is damaged, the city's not responsible for any damage to the encroaching structure, and they would have to get any applicable permits for the location of the gate. Again, some images just showing this is a, a dead end alley that goes over a hillside over to Main Street, drops off substantially there. There is no continuation of the alley, but there are some utilities in the alley right of way that do need to be maintained access to, so.
Anyone from the audience with any questions or concerns? Okay, see none. Counsel?
Not me.
Laura.
Aye.
Motion to close.
Second.
Kathleen.
McCamble.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
Your honor, I have a resolution approving permanent encroachment agreement with Tracy Thompson for encroachment into city right of way at one twenty-nine Polk Street, Burlington.
Second. Move to second. Let's take it to vote. Kathleen.
McCamble.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
Your honor, I have a resolution approving permanent encroachment agreement with Tracy Thompson for encroachment into city right of way at one twenty-nine Polk Street, Burlington.
Second. Move to second. Let's take it to vote. Kathleen.
McCamble.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
Well done. Thank you, Trace. Okay, moving right along. This is time set for hearing for consideration of an ordinance rezoning the property located at twenty-nine ten Madison Avenue from R one single-family residential to C one limited commercial zoning district. Application has been made. Mr. Tisland.
Again, this is a request to rezone the former Klein Center located at the corner of Madison and Kestner from R one, a single-family residential to C one limited commercial zoning district. This property is directly adjacent to an R four multifamily residential district to the west of the property. There is a small C one to the south that contains a drive-through ATM. There's no actual business there. It's just a, a single ATM. And then county property as well to the south, park property, and R one to the north and to the east. This went to the planning commission on July nineteenth. Regarding the rezoning, the planning commission voted one to three to recommend approval of the requested rezoning to the city council, so they did not recommend approval. Their recommendation was based on the potential negative impact of a commercial business could have on the existing residential neighborhood, based on the future land use map for the area being low-density residential and lack of support for the request at the hearing. The planning commission did discuss the possibility of considering alternative residential zoning designations for the property, potentially R four or C one designations with conditions limiting the use of the property, or also might be a requirement or opportunity for a PUD at the property. There's not been a firm development plan for the property at this time. They're, I guess, based on the request, their initial request is to make it into apartments and change it to C one to allow some commercial use on the first floor as well, but I guess from our understanding going through the process, it's based on a potential development, not an actual development going forward. And the concern staff had was not knowing all the different uses that might go in there or could go in there. C one wouldn't cover all the potential uses and R four wouldn't cover them. A PUD might be the most opportunity or best zoning for the site based on its past use and the limited redevelopment opportunities for an R one, so unless there's an actual development proposal brought forward with specific uses, then a PUD could be brought forward as well. So we realize that is a property that will need to be rezoned, just didn't feel that what has been presented at this time was a firm development proposal, is just some kind of speculation on what could go in there. It's limited, the C one limits it, and the R one and R four are limited as well, so we just wanted to make sure we're going through the process appropriately and not going through it a multiple times, so. So that's what the, the recommendation was through the planning commission and from staff.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or concerns? Yes, sir? Can you come to the, come up front and give us your name and address, please?
Cody Ford, the twenty-nine hundred Madison Avenue.
Name, please.
Cody Ford.
Move that microphone up to your, please. Yeah, thank you.
Well, we, what actually what we would like to do with it is put, make a hotel, the top two floors, and have the bottom floor like a gym, and then a commercial kitchen it already has in there, and, and then a laundromat, is what was proposing.
Good.
Okay.
You guys have any other questions?
We were under the, we were under the, or I guess we were under the understanding that, that changing the zoning wasn't going to be an issue, and we talked to the staff about before we purchased the property.
Go ahead.
My position is, Cody, is I have no problem with changing the zoning as long as we know what the plan is, and like Eric said, maybe a PUD is a better way to go than to change it just to C one, because under what he has planned, would that work in C one?
C one does not allow hotel. It would have to be C two general commercial.
So this is not the right zoning classification.
Well, it was actually, from what Charlie said, it was extended stay, like would follow in that classification. That's why we chose that classification. Yes.
I'd have to look at what you're proposing. A hotel is a general commercial use. R four would allow multifamily apartment-type use, typically sixty days or longer, so just depends on what, what's actually going in there.
Yeah, hotels, what, what we talked about with Charlie, and it's the zoning that he said that we needed to.
Yeah, the application stated make it into apartments and stated from R one to R four, so that.
It was R four first, and then we changed it to.
C one.
C one is what we needed to open up. He said to open up the commercial kitchen and to have a commercial on the bottom floor.
Well, we're not going to be able to address that for you tonight. We're just, we're just here to address if it's going to get rezoned or not, and it sounds like even if we rezoned it to C one, that it's still not going to be specifically to meet your needs, that you'd still have to go through a PUD. Is that correct? PUD, is that correct?
C one wouldn't allow a hotel. I'm, I'm not sure, I guess, what the extended stay that, or short-term stay, anything shorter than sixty days would have, require the, I think, the, I'm kind of speaking here, not having talked to Charlie, and not having talked to you on any of this either, but short-term lodging, less than sixty days, would be a hotel motel or bed and breakfast, and then that would require a C two to go through that process. And a C one only allows commercial use up to ten thousand square feet, so once you got over that, that would also be limiting, and the building's substantially bigger than that on the first floor, so.
So I guess the bottom line is this, Cody, for me, I'd like to have you go ahead with your plan, but get together with him and come up with a PUD or something that's going to work, but it sounds like this is not going to fit what you want. I don't want you to go away here discouraged that you can't do something, because I really want you to. It's just I want you to be able to do it the right way.
I think that goes for everybody.
We want to see that get developed. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to say just about the same thing. I support your, what you're wanting to do, it's just this action isn't going to get it done for you. And if we can help in any way, you know, come back and see us. We'd love to see you be successful out there and make something out of that property.
Scott, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Cody.
Any other comments from the audience? Anybody else? Okay. Counsel?
I've said what I need to say.
Motion to close.
Second.
Kathleen.
McCamble.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
Motion for preliminary adoption of the first reading, an ordinance rezoning the property located at twenty-nine ten Madison Avenue, from R one single-family residential to C one limited commercial zoning district.
Second.
McCamble.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
Motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading, an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter one fifty-five International Building Code, the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
Second. Mr. Tisland.
No changes from the previous reading. Again, the primary reason behind modifying our codes, and we'll be modifying more as we go through, is going to the updated edition of the International Building Code. We're currently under the twenty-twelve edition, and this goes to the twenty-fifteen edition of the International Building Code. It also makes, allows for additional exception that was in the two thousand and nine code, but it was not listed in the twenty-twelve or twenty-fifteen code, which specifically applies to floors two and three for fully sprinkled buildings where windows are not required in bedroom, bedrooms. They're not, under those codes and under the current code, the twenty-fifteen code, in floors four and above bedrooms and fully sprinkled buildings are not, do not require to have a window access, but on floors two and three they do, and this provides for an exception for that type of building that has a fully approved automatic sprinkler system or where sleeping rooms are provided with a door to fire resistance rated corridor having access to two remote exits in opposite directions. So that's the, it's the primary change within this section of the code.
Anybody have any questions or concerns over the code change? Anyone from the audience? See none? Counsel?
Good to update.
Your honor, I have a motion to amend. I'd like to amend the motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading, an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter one fifty-five International Building Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code to read as follows. For waiver of preliminary consideration, adoption of the second reading, for final adoption of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter one fifty-five International Building Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
Second. Thank you. Let's take a vote on the, on to amend.
McCamble.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
And let's vote as amended.
McCamble.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
Good to.
Your honor, I have a motion to amend. I'd like to amend the motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading, an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter one fifty-five International Building Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code to read as follows. For waiver of preliminary consideration, adoption of the second reading, for final adoption of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter one fifty-five International Building Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
Thank you. Let's take a vote on the, on to amend.
McCamble.
Yes.
Scott.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
And let's vote as amended.
McCamble.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
Good to. Nice to have you.
Your honor, I have a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading, an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter one fifty-six of the International Existing Building Code for the City of Burlington, Iowa.
Second. Mr. Tisland.
Again, this is going from the twenty-twelve edition to the twenty-fifteen edition of the International Existing Building Code. The one primary change within this section is just a clarification that under Section six of Section one fifty-six point oh three, there's a amendment that allows for, describes where sprinklers are required or not required in small buildings of three stories in height maximum and no more than four dwelling units. This is just a clarification that is currently in our International Building Code section, just to bring it into the International Existing Building Code as well. So if someone's looking at one code and not the other, that they're still getting that same understanding and exception, so it's not a new change, it's just a clarification to bring it into this section of the code.
Any questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
Counsel also, or counsel also have an amendment for this action. To amend a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading, an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter one fifty-six International Existing Building Code for the City of Burlington Municipal Code to read as follows. For waiver of preliminary consideration, an adoption of the second reading, and for final adoption of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter one fifty-six International Existing Building Code in the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
Second. Okay, let's vote on the amendment.
McCamble.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
Okay, now let's vote on as amended.
McCamble.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
Your honor, I have a resolution authorizing reserved parking along Valley Street to the east of Main Street.
Second.
This is tied to the sale of property at one eighteen North Main Street. As part of the city's lease agreement with US Bank, while they're still in the building downtown, the city's required to provide eighteen parking spaces to the, for use by the bank. With this lot going away, they would not have access to that, and this agreement allows for five of those parking spaces to be used in the parking lot to the south of Valley in the city's existing lot, which could be increased potentially if additional became available. Then the remaining to be on-street on the south side of Valley Street, just east of Main Street, in front of this, the property where they're parking now. So this provides for reserved parking for use by US Bank from seven thirty AM to five PM on Monday through Friday, just during the time until they relocate out of this building downtown. Currently, that site has parallel parking, I believe there's three or four spots there. It would be changed to angle parking, which would add eleven additional spot, or eleven total new spots, so an addition of seven or eight spots to that site. And based on the eighteen required in the five in the other lot, approximately eleven to thirteen would be required to be reserved here. And that would still allow eight to ten spots for public parking to the east of that on Valley Street.
Sounds good. Anybody from the audience have any questions or concerns?
I thought your honor was going to get up for a minute. All right.
Counsel?
Your honor, I still have some concerns that the, a couple of the business owners in that area had expressed some displeasure with the fact that we changed the parking from, it was either two hour to four hour, or three hour to four hour, on-street parking time limit in that area, and it's caused him, caused them some heartache as far as parking space for their customers. Taking those three or four spots off the street that, and filling them in with all the reserved spots is not going to make life easier for them. I know what we've got to do, and I understand, I understand it's going to be a, a short-term change, but I would say be prepared, if this passes, that we're going to hear from a couple of business owners in that area.
In the long run, though, it's going to be a benefit to them.
Pardon me?
In the long run, it'll be a benefit because we're adding, we're adding parking spaces.
No, and that's, that's what made it palatable for me. I'm not sure that it will be for them, but it's in a short term.
Would you like to look at, maybe not as part of this motion, but to look at the first, the other ten slots? Be, consider making those, move those back to two hours as some way to compromise for what he's looking at doing?
I, um.
At least have a discussion on that.
Yeah, I, I think that would be helpful.
Do you think that would satisfy?
We could, we could bring that back as something to, to look at, at a future council meeting.
Do you think that would?
Yeah.
Do you think that would, would squelch the?
I don't know whether it will or not, but it's something to look at.
Step in the right direction.
We'll, we'll know in a day or two.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? Counsel?
No.
Okay. Let's take it to vote.
McCamble.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
Your honor, a resolution to install stop signs at Angular Street at the intersection of Ninth Street, Madison Avenue, and Angular Street.
Mr. McGregor.
I need a second.
Oh, second. Thank you.
Counsel, before you is a resolution to make Ninth and Angular a four-way stop. We were presented with a complaint of visibility issues from the alleyway at, between Ninth and Tenth off of Angular, after running analysis of site distance and then going through the MUTC, which goes through traffic counts, site distances, and accidents in the previous years. Staff believe that it was a better solution to make this a four-way stop rather than reducing parking. And if you have the site distance up there, that might be good to show too. And so the lower picture shows where the complaint resonated, was from the alleyway rather than from Ninth. And we're making that a stop sign at, on Angular, brings that site distance in, making the car more visible.
I guess my question, Nick, is how, how will we make that stop sign visible?
In the installation, we'll put flags on the side of it as well as paint a stop In the installation, we'll put flags on the side of it as well as paint a stop bar, similar to the way Division Street is painted. So white stop bar across the two lanes. It's not two lanes there, but it is a, a wider one lane.
Right.
So we'll paint stop bars across that to indicate that there is a stop sign there.
Great.
We looked into the flashing ones, similar to what West Burlington has. They cost $1,300 per sign, so that will likely not happen if passed.
The stop bar will help immensely. Okay, thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Anybody from the audience that has any questions or concerns? Yes, sir. Come to the front, please. Give us your name and address, please.
Victor Moore, 535 South Ninth, Department 6. I live at 535 South Ninth Force about nine years, almost nine years. And it's been previous accidents, there's been a number of accidents there, just one just about a, about a week, maybe two weeks ago. And coming out of that alleyway there, and you got vehicles parked along that side street there, and you can't see over across by the tattoo shop there, when you got vehicles parked there, and you got a neighbor that's got a white utility truck parked there.
Right.
And it's blocking the, the structure and view of the stop sign over there. You get ready to pull out there in that alley, you got a car coming towards this way, and you about ready to get your front end tore off, and about ready to tow up your car. And I hate to see, see that happen to anybody that lives along, lives in that alleyway there, coming out of that alley, and it's a dangerous, dangerous situation there. There's been many accidents there, and I'd like to see something did about it, you know? The stop signs, I would go with that to slow the traffic down, but I would like to see no parking sign right there also. You know, you got two no parking signs right there already, and the vehicle is parked a couple of feet up from them, two sign. And you put two more, a couple of more signs there, it'd help, it'd, it'd make it more better there too, you know, no, some more parking, no more parking signs there too, you know, although we have visibility there to see across that road there. You pull, like you got two vehicles parked there, you can't see. You had to stop a short distance on that alley just to see over there that stop sign. By the time you pull up again, pull up to pull out there in the, in the intersection, you got vehicles coming. And I hate to see an accident right there at the alleyway right there, somebody getting their vehicle tore up, and it'd be their fault, not for the incoming traffic.
Right, yeah, right.
You know, that's, that's a dangerous situation. And that's more, and that's money out of their pocket they have to pay for.
Paying for that.
For, you know, for, you know, deductible, you know?
Yeah.
Five hundred dollar deductible, that hurts the person's pocket, you know, and insurance, you know? And then there they go, their insurance rates raising up, you know?
You're making a difference, my friend. Even though you're wearing a Lions shirt. I can't look at it for very long, I mean, I was gonna sit down. But, uh...
See, we, I would like to see, I would like to see no signs there though, too, also, you know? See them, see them no parking signs, you got two there, go ahead and put some more there, you know? It'll make it visible to see up Angular towards Central and make it look visible more down towards Main, you know? You know, so...
That may be worth looking at.
It's, it's, it's hazardous right there, you know? It's been, you know, even in the wintertime, you know?
Thank you, Vic.
Thank you.
Well said.
Is there anybody else from the audience with any concerns?
When this request first came, first came in, you had brought the, the request in, and Nick and Chris, you went and looked, looked at this site and talked as you...
Both myself and the operations manager took a look at this situation, and both came to the conclusion that a stop sign would bring cars to a stopping point for visibility's sake. I think no parking would probably be a viable option as well as far as visibility. It probably would not increase the safety factor as far as traveling speed down Angular.
That's, that's the big issue, isn't it?
This was, and so this was brought forward thinking about the requests that you were making initially, and this was what they, the Public Works brought forward for you to consider for taking care, care of the issue in this court.
As far as parking too closely, if you...
If you wanted another, wanted to look at additional things like the, the stop, the increasing the no parking areas, that, that can be done. It would be bringing forward another action, and we, if that's what you want to do. That wasn't the, the route that Public Works was wanting to go, was recommending as the best alternative on this, but...
Well, I mean, if you guys looked at all, you don't see any rea, I mean, Nick, what do you, what do you see on that? Do you see any reason to, to add on to that, or do you feel confident the stop sign?
I think the stop signs will, will negate a lot of the, you know, potential danger there. I do think that taking some of that parking away would probably also do that. I, ultimately, I think the stop signs would create more safety than reducing the parking, but combined, it, it could be done, but I'm sorry to interrupt.
How many parking spots that can affect?
Say what?
Do you know how many parking spots that, that would affect?
Probably about three, but you would be reducing the one gentleman who has no parking, who is the one that is parking on the east side of Ninth Street on Angular, he would have no parking off-site.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Do you guys have any other questions?
No, not at this stage, no.
Thank you.
As far as parking too close, there is a limitation on how close you can park to, to drives. It's a matter of, you know, seeing that and then being able to enforce them to back off of where they're parking.
Yeah. All right.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Thank you.
If we, if we pass this, Nick, would you please stay in close contact with this gentleman?
We will.
And see what difference it makes, whether it makes a difference or not for his concerns at the, at the alley, if the traffic slows down enough that he feels safe, and if not, then bring back another action to, to take care of it, I, I would guess.
Yeah, we will send contact. We'll, we will probably likely monitor the situation ourselves.
All right.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Let's, uh, let's take it. Does anybody have any, any, anything else that we didn't...
Just from personal experience, I can tell you, I don't know if it's, must have been yesterday, no, last week I drove by there specifically, and there was somebody coming out of that alley at the time I was driving by. They did have to get out there quite a ways to see around that pickup, but I, I think slowing the traffic down, I think we should give a, see how it goes and evaluate later.
It's a good step, I think.
Yeah, I think so too. We're going to, this is all we've got on, we can't add anything to it, so this is as far as we can do tonight, but we're, we're gonna go ahead and add the, well, we're gonna take it to vote.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Okay, so the eyes have it, so we'll be adding a stop sign. Mr. McGregor's gonna keep an eye on that for the next week or two and see how, see how that works out, see if we need to make any other alterations or adjustments. If we do, we'll have to come, we'll have to have another, another action down here, but that'll, that'll take care of the stop sign, that's in effect. We've got one more resolution tonight.
Your Honor, I have a set date for public hearing for consideration of the 2016 amendment to the urban renewal plan for Burlington urban renewal area, October 30th, for October 30th, 2016.
Need a second?
Second.
I was gonna say if it doesn't get seconded, but it doesn't get...
True.
This has been brought forward for consideration. Had, we had a few different proposals in the spring. Richard Silva made one, Miller Valentine made one, and, and I apologize, I can't remember the...
Stephanie.
Stephanie made the art school presentation. The council had originally looked to work, go into a development agreement with Miller Valentine. They ended up with postponing their desire to work on a project. They've never officially said that they're completely off the table, but they said that until we're ready, or we see that it makes a financial viable sense to make a project work, we're, we aren't gonna ask the city to move forward with, with approving an agreement. Given that Richard Silva had come back with another developer to look at the idea of submitting low-income housing tax credit program application for a combination of senior housing and not then more market levels senior housing for, that was open to whoever, or senior housing, market level, low, low-income housing for the general public. That was different from what Miller Valentine made a presentation with. Miller Valentine talked about two separate phases, the first phase being senior housing and the second phase, if they were to go into it, to be more potentially a general low-income housing project. The request from Richard Silva would be to develop, was it 55 in that neighborhood?
Yeah, between 50 and 60, I think.
And they were looking at about a nine, no, almost $10 million project, just shy of $10 million. Would have required a $700,000 match from the city, which we could do through a TIF rebate. That would help them to score, maximum score on that LIHTC program. And what you see before you with this public hearing is to amend the TIF plan, the urban renewal plan to allow a TIF rebate. The TIF rebate that is, that you see listed in this notice is for a larger amount, it's a million dollars. That would allow if, when we talked with attorney about what we could do, we decided not to have the name of a developer in here, and we tried to leave it a little generic, given that this project could have been resized from what they're currently looking at at the $700,000 match requirement. So we wanted to make sure there was a little bit of flexibility within the urban plan, the urban renewal plan amendment. It really essentially, what's before you now is setting a hearing to consider that plan amendment, if you want to move forward with doing a project with either Richard Silva or, or any other developer really for that matter under this type of terms.
Any questions from the audience? See none? Counsel? Kind of have mixed feelings about this, since all we're doing is setting a date for a public hearing. Does it hurt to have a public hearing? But we're taking another whole month to drag this out, and I guess I'm at the point, like I said earlier, way back last spring, if Miller Valentine couldn't get it together, then I was not in favor of going forward any further, so at this point, I'm gonna say no.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm ready to be done with this. The, Richard Silva come back and talk with us, and, and that's about all he did, was talk with us. He didn't really show us any kind of plan. He talked about some numbers, some, you know, 50 to 60 apartments. He reiterated numerous times that it's going to be a very difficult project. I didn't feel comfortable with the numbers that he was, had put together. He, he was calling it a $10 million project and not knowing how many apartments he was going to have. He didn't know what he was going to do with the remainder of the property. There was, there was really not a plan for us to, to look at. And I had made up my mind that if we couldn't have somebody show us the money by this fall, that I was going to be finished with it. And, and Councilman Davidson had, had pretty much said the same thing. We have to make a decision at some point that, to, to move on. And this, the, the other factor was that this would take until the fall of 18 before they would start turning any dirt. It would be another year before they would have the, have any apartments available. And that, that date that I give of turning dirt was, that's only if they, they come up with the money. Richard Silva tried to do a project at Silver School, was gonna demo the building and do a senior housing project. And because of the competitiveness of the financing for, for that project and this project at Apollo School, he, he didn't get the funding for it. But he tied up a person's property for about 18 months, waiting for a decision from the, from the state and federal and everybody else that he was getting money from. And this, the gentleman that owned this property had turned down two other offers on that property because of that. And now he doesn't have any offers on the property. He's, he's wanting to sell it, but unable to, so I'm just afraid we're gonna sit on this for another three years, we're gonna continue to maintain the property at the minimum level, but we're gonna continue to maintain the property, and we're still gonna end up with a bill to demolish. And I think if we were to clear the site and make it available for, for development, that even if we sold off one lot at a time, we're gonna be ahead of where, where we're at now, and probably ahead of where we would be in, in, in three years. I think there's other qualified properties in this community that the same type of project can be done and better suited and better located for, for this type of thing, so I don't want to discourage people from doing this kind of development. I just don't think this is the right place, and, and, I mean, we're, we've been looking at this building in this condition or near this condition for the last 30 years. It's, it's, it's time to make a decision. And this is the first opportunity that we've had to, to, to talk about this, and it's probably not the right time to be saying what we're saying about it, but I think that the Hawkeye called us out, we need to, we need to let it be known why we're, why we're not in, in favor of this project, and, and not have Richard Silva or anybody else put any more money into, to putting a plan together. If, if we're at a point as a council where we're ready to, to just take this project off our books and, and make a decision to demolish and just get rid of the property.
Amen.
Anything to add to that?
No, I just, I know that a lot of neighbors would be happy to see that building tarred down and the area redeveloped, and that would be a net improvement for our community.
I already said what I had to say last week, I'm finished with it. Kathleen, let's take it to vote.
Okay, and I vote makes it set date for hearing.
Thank you.
Welcome. McCambo?
No.
Scott?
No.
Davidson?
No.
Fleming?
No.
Okay. Now this is time for, that we will entertain comments from the audience. If there's anybody here that has any comments, anybody here but Terry Struthers? If there's anybody here besides Terry Struthers or Dean, we'll entertain comments.
Okay, first off, I'd like to wish all of you Happy Labor Day, hoping you get into wild, get in trouble. Basically, you just put up a point about the Hawkeye said. I think he's right, we gotta make a decision about where, first off, I think was really irresponsible for the school board to say, well, we don't want to deal with this, so we're gonna kick the can to the city council to deal with, first off. But like I said before, I would like to save a rebuilding in Burlington, but we can't because it's gonna take tons, tons of money to refurnish that building. You gotta put in elevators. I talked to somebody who went through that building, there's, could be a festus in that building you have to deal with to get rid of. Place you have to put fire alarms, smoke detectors. I am not Donald Trump, I don't have the money. But I think it's about time we make a decision about whether to, are we gonna keep putting money in the building, or we're gonna tear it down? I mean, most people, like he said, he was a teacher, I went to school there, the last two, the, I went to school there until the last two years to New High School. I mean, most people in this city went to school, they have fond memories. But you cannot, it just, you just cannot save every building. The problem we got in this city, we got a lot of empty buildings and a lot of houses that are empty, and I think that's also a problem too. I mean, you go on, now you got Menards is empty, it's gonna be empty another 30 years. I mean, you got that old Walmart's a half empty, you got that mall over by where the man used to be, two or three spots are empty, J.C. Penney's is empty. But I think it just, like you said, it comes down to, I think it's about time, it's sad to see it happen, but I think it's about time we just tear down that school, maybe put public housing there or something like that, which we do need in this city. I just, I think it's, it's overdue, and I think it's out of, unless we have the money to put money into these buildings, okay, but if we don't have the money, what else comes down is it worth putting the money into? I say no. Enough is enough, and I think it's about time we say bye-bye to Apollo School. And Happy Labor Day, and may the Lord Jesus Christ be with you, and peace be with you, all of you.
Thank you, Dean. You never let me down with that, Dean. Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Any comments or questions? Anyone except for Mr. Struthers? Anybody? Anyone? I could only, I could only hope and pray. Mr. Struthers?
I'm Terry Struthers, and I live at 212 thousand Gunnison, a few blocks from the Apollo School. I, I would first like to ask you, do you have an offer from... Landover? And have they submitted a proposal to you?
We don't, we don't have anything that, well, let me, let me just speak for me. I, I didn't say anything that, that I thought fit with.
And if you'd speak a bit louder for me, please.
We, we had a proposal come in. It wasn't, it wasn't detailed. And when the, when the proposal originally came in, it was what they offered. They said that they were going to do a, a remodel for elderly, for senior citizens. Well, that, that fell out of the way. And when that, when that went by the wayside, that's when I was completely out. So I just want to speak for myself here. That was the only thing that we've had. That building's been sitting, I don't know for how long. And we've had one developer with two other different companies come and show a little interest and the young girl. That's, that's all we've ever had on it.
And that's all?
That's it. That's it.
I know that Miller Valentine opted out. Is that correct?
Was it Miller Val-? Okay.
Yes.
Yeah. And according to the Hawkeye last week, or sometime this week, I hear a few days ago, all of you were against or thought that, that you had spent enough time on the Apollo project or trying to promote it or to... And I was under the impression that Landover was second in line and had presen- had prevented, presented a proposal. And you were not in line with its, or didn't agree with its proposal or something. Is that true?
For, for me, I wouldn't, I wouldn't call it a, a proposal, Mr. Struthers. He come forward with a, with a concept, but there was, there was no money has exchanged hands. They, they, they made no offer to, to purchase the building. There, there's, as far as I'm concerned, no skin in the game on, on their point, on their part at this point. The, there was a purchase price talked about with, with Miller Valentine. I don't know if there ever was with.
Hey, that Richard Silva, Landover presented a, a proposal to purchase the facility that upfront it would be an option to purchase for, I think it was about a, a year.
Yeah.
Through next April, I think, allowing them to go through the low income housing tax cut program. That offer, it put forward a price to purchase it for. It asked for 15 years of 100% tax abatement. It also asked for cash infusion if they did, were awarded funds from the city. But it also didn't have, as was pointed out, it didn't have a full use of the, the whole site. It was using a couple of floors. He wasn't sure what he was doing with the remainder of the space. They talked about leaving that vacant for a period of time. Wasn't sure where that was going to go. So you, there was a proposal set forward. It was different from Miller Valentine's. And I think probably one of the bigger, biggest distinctions was who the housing was for. Again, Miller Valentine talked about this being, that this main application being for 50 units of senior housing through the low income housing tax cut program. Richard Silva's proposal talked about it being a low income housing, a portion of it for seniors, a portion of it non-age restricted. So you did have a formal proposal and they had that and you were able to see some tentative pieces to what a final development agreement might look like. But ultimately, they have deci- the, the decisions they've made are saying that those tentative pieces, they were not in favor of.
May I also say that Apollo is perhaps the sturdiest building in town. It is architecturally an attractive building. And to see demolished and a, an empty space in that area would be... It is an eyesore. But I hope that, or would hope that you would be able to find some redevelopment that would help to enhance that area. You mo- you probably are not in agreement, agreement with my sentiments, but...
Let me, I, I would, I would dare to say I, I would disagree with that. I think that's part of the reason why it sat so long is because really everybody's hopes was that hopefully there would be.
And so are you saying this isn't a closed?
No, it's closed for me. This building's going down as far as I'm concerned. As far as I'm concerned, that building's going down.
And you followed him last week or said?
No, he, he didn't follow anybody. He's Jim Davidson.
Well, anyway.
Really sat a long time, Mr. Struthers.
It's a grand lady and I personally would hate to see it. I know it's an eyesore, but...
It's more than that, though. It's more than just an eyesore. It, it's got so many complications that come with that building and it sat, it sat long, for a long time.
And what would it cost the city to have it demolished? Wouldn't you spend at least a million?
Hopefully not.
Dollars or more?
We have a, right now, the tentative cost estimate that was put together, about $600,000, including the asbestos removal. Until we go out to bids, we don't know what that would actually be. My assumption for the, where the, I mean, I don't know where the council's going to want to head with this, but that, that's what would be the next action item that will be brought forward is action to start the process for doing demolition. If they do choose to move forward with that, I would assume that there would be some discussions from the council over the next months about how to look at redevelopment on that site. And that hasn't been part of the discussion yet, but we, I think some of the things that have been mentioned would includes, is there, there some sort of a development that can happen that we can get some single family housing back in this area? See if we can't structure some sort of a development agreement where we can go out for proposals. I think those are things that will be discussed from the council, that that's the route that they ultimately end up moving over the next few weeks and months. So you may see something happen for redevelopment there, but what they're, where they're in line right now with actions is not with the existing structure. It would be in some other alternative. But that, that's a discussion that's going to have to go forward in future meetings.
Well said.
Thank you. And have a good evening.
Thank you, Terry.
Anybody else from the audience? Comments or concerns? Come on, Dean.
Okay. My memory's not too well, but I think it closed down in the 70s. So that's making around 40 to 50 years it's been vacant. But like I still say.
It was in the 70s. I think it was like 80. I was, I was there the last year.
But I remember I went to, the 77, I graduated from the New High School, I was there in 76. So I think 75 is when it was closed down. But like I said, that it's also, my worry is that you should recover for this. But if somebody, if a hobo or somebody, some kids decide, hey, let's play in that building and they get seriously injured or somebody dies, the city is responsible. And they could have a big loss.
Hey, 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 what are you talking about? Sit back down, Dean.
Sorry.
I just play.
But that's my, you know, like I said before, and I'll say this 10,000 times, I would like to save every building in this town, but there comes a point where you got to look at and say, is it, would it cost more to remodel, to keep it than not? And it's been, and like somebody says, it's a white elephant. And I think it'd be best to tear it down and put little red housing there, maybe have, have a bad humanity, build a whole bunch of houses there. But I think that's the best thing to do.
Thank you, Mr. Struthers.
That's it.
Thank you, Dean.
Any other comments from the audience? I see none. Been a lovely audience tonight. Well, I see one over in the corner. Yes. Could I be, yes, come to the podium, please? And give us your name and address, please?
Tammy Thomas. I live in the neighborhood where Apollo School is. And I personally don't want to see it tore down either. Is there a reason that the other, that was Landover didn't?
That Landover didn't?
You didn't agree with what they had proposed to do or something it said?
Personally, I didn't. They, they still didn't, I mean, it's not like they came with blueprints and all of that stuff, you know? They came with a concept. It changed over the process of time, well, over a process of a short amount of time. I, I definitely, this is where I'm coming from. When I, when I look at a project that big, it's a behemoth that's huge. When I look at a building like that, there, there's very few things that you can do with that, that you can look at and say, well, is this going to hold up? Is this going to be okay 10 years down the road or five years down the road or 15 years down the road? Well, this is my mindset, just so that you can have this clear from where I'm coming from. We just tore down the manor. You know, saying, well.
Yeah.
I was hoping for, we need, we need elderly, we need more residential, for elderly. That being said, I, the model of putting a bunch of impoverished people in a, in a big building, that model doesn't work. I mean, it, it doesn't. And that's what that would have been. The model doesn't work. I didn't like where it was going. We've been waiting and waiting, trying to, you know, waiting for somebody to come in that was going to offer something decent to do with this big building. Nobody's got one. And all this while, we're just compounding more money to the citizens by cutting the grass and reboarding up and all of the stuff that we have to do. And, you know, there's always other horrible things that could possibly happen. I, to me personally, I, I love that building. I was there the last year that it was up. I was. I, I graduated '77. I was there the last year it was up. It's got to come down. It's got to come down.
Oh, I just know with everything that's going on downtown, all the development down there, somebody else might be interested some down.
We've been waiting for years. We've been waiting for years for somebody to get interested with that building.
I know, but there's a lot more things happening in Burlington than there was 10 years ago.
Appreciate your optimism. I need that next time my daughters clean it up down in the basement. Make me feel better about that.
I just, I just want to voice my opinion and I live in the neighborhood. I don't really want to see it tore down either.
Thank you, Tammy.
Thanks.
Thanks for coming down, Tammy. I appreciate it. Mark? Oh, no, your brother's here tonight. What's up, Mike?
This is Mike Crowner. I'd just like to say this Apollo School, you know, it's set empty long enough. If anybody else owned that building, we'd be looking at trying to condemn it. So I agree with you guys. Let's get it down, get it cleaned up, sell lots and have brand new houses up there. That's all I wanted to say.
All right. Mr. Tinsel?
Mr. Scott?
Last week, there was a, an article in the Burlington Hawkeye about using cell phones in your vehicles. I think it was actually an AP. There was a sidebar that they put in that said that there, there are no laws on the books for Iowa or Illinois. And I suggest that you not use your cellphone in Illinois because you will be cited for using your cellphone in your vehicle. I just, I guess I just wanted to point that out. That was, that was not a correct statement. That was, that was in the, in the article. They'll pull you over quick. I know firsthand.
They'll pull you over quick.
I wasn't driving.
Is that all you got?
That's it.
All I have is Antoinette. Hope you get feeling better. And also happy birthday to my baby sister, Melinda. I shook the major's hand. So she's watching. So I shook the major's hand. I'll stop by her house and, and touch her afterwards. Maybe she'll get some healing power. Mayor Proton?
I want to express my sympathies to Brad Selby and his family. Brad, as you know, is the recreation director here. His stepson is correct, was in that motorcycle accident last week. So our sympathies to him. What did you say? The visitation is Thursday?
Yeah.
From 5:00 to 8:00, wasn't it?
Yep.
Okay. And hopefully we have a new, newborn in the family soon here with Charlie and his wife. We'll see. Also, on a lighter note, I want to express my sympathies to anybody, maybe there's one person here that happens to be a fighting Irish fan.
Oh, jeez.
So maybe there's, maybe there's better things coming.
That's a classy move, my friend. That was a classy move.
And I was wondering why Charlie having a newborn wasn't on the lighter note side, actually, but now I'm really flabbergasted what to do with this Texas.
See, man, take us home.
Those council members who are involved on the RFP for Engineering Services on Mount Pleasant Street Bridge, we're expecting bids back by tomorrow. And I don't know what you're looking at for maybe at the end of this week to get a schedule out for what we're looking to do.
They, they'll come in tomorrow and back by the 14th. So I'm expecting probably four or five. If it's only four and they're shorter, I'll give you paper copies. Otherwise, will digital Dropbox work for you to score from? They'll give you scoring sheets.
We are working on Steamboat Days contract renewal. I think that ended September 1 was... Maybe the, okay. So we're right at the renewal date. We still have some things that we still have to iron out details before we're able to bring something back to the council for consideration. And radio program is council member Scott and Bob for tomorrow morning at 9 o'clock. And I took care of what I wanted to make sure with Brad, our thoughts and prayers are with him.
Before we close, are you done?
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry. Before we close out, Chief, do you want to announce, make an announcement? Yeah. Isn't there something, do we got something going on down at the fire department this Sunday?
Thanks for everybody. A lot of other things I was thinking about.
Yes, Sunday morning, we're going to have a 9/11 remembrance ceremony at the station, Central Fire Station. Starts at 7:43. Seems like a weird time, but that's when the first plane hit the first World Trade Center tower. So we're going to start with the bell ringing. That'll actually start off the ceremony. There'll be no announcement like we're starting right now, but 7:43 it starts. And then we're going to read through all the firefighters' names that were killed and also law enforcement officers that were killed on 9/11. So it should take about a half hour. Be a lot of representative from area fire departments, law enforcement agencies. Hopefully we'll have a good turnout for that. So we just think it's important that we do something every year today, or this Sunday will be the 15 year anniversary. So it doesn't seem like it's been that long, but so. So it doesn't seem like it'll spend that long, but, so.
Chief, I want you to know it's not that I don't care, but Sunday mornings are not time for me to come to things like that. So I won't be there.
Okay. I'll be there on my way to church.
You're on the agenda, so.
That's right. I'll be there. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks for reminding me.
All righty. Mr. McGregor?
In response to Councilmember Davidson's question about the DOT and hanging things across Highway sixty-one, that's a no-go.
Yeah, so I thought it was. Thank you.
All right. Can I entertain a motion? Motion to adjourn?
I second.
Kathleen?
McCambe?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you, counsel. God bless you.